Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Apex Planning Board Meeting. Today is September eighth, two thousand and twenty five. And I'd like to ask Mr. Keith Braswell for invocation, please.
Thank you, sir. Bow your heads. Dear Lord, please be with us today as we lead in God through this town's decision. Please be with us and help us in our best. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Okay, if we can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Invite anybody to sign up if they have not already to your left. If you have any items that you want to speak in regards to whether it be on the agenda items or anything else that is not on the agenda items. Okay. Okay, the purpose of the public comment is to allow the public to speak on items that do not appear in this agenda. The public hearings. Any member of the public who's wishing to comment on public hearing items will be called on at the appropriate time later once you've signed up. So please make sure to sign in. It's an opportunity to publicly address concerns or opinions, but it's not intended to be a question and answer session. And during the public comment, the public may comment on any non-public hearing items, including new business items that do not appear in this agenda. Okay, if there are any large groups, which I don't believe we're going to have today, but if there are, we ask that you keep that down to three minutes whenever you do speak. Do we have anything from the town prior to starting into our consent items?
There are no items of information.
No items of information. Okay. Okay, so I'll move into consent items number one. Consent item number one is the minutes from the August eleventh, two thousand and twenty five town meeting. I'm assuming everybody has read meetings, minutes. Are any questions, concerns, corrections? Okay, would somebody like to move, make a motion if you just say your name?
Aye, Sarah, would like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from last month.
Alyssa seconds.
Okay, we got a motion from Sarah and a second from Alyssa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, now we're moving into the public hearings. The public hearings. We've kind of addressed this already. We're not going to have too many concerns here with the number of people, but keep your comments down to three. Public, first item, we're going to have Ms. Amanda Bunce. And this is for the public hearing, a possible motion regarding rezoning case twenty-five CZ zero eight, the Veridia Expansion Three. And I understand Alyssa, we need to recuse. So can I get a recusal for Alyssa?
I'll make a request for recusal from this board.
Aye, Sarah could second that.
Keith and Sarah. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, you're recused.
Okay, so this is the third expansion for the Veridia Development, which of course is located south of US one and west of fifty-five. This proposed expansion involves approximately one point five two acres on the east side of, west side of East Williams Street. The properties to the north, generally west and south, are all part of the existing Veridia Development. And this little parcel here is already included in the SD CZ zoning for Veridia. The proposal is to rezone these parcels from residential agricultural to sustainable development conditional zoning for Veridia. The applicant conducted their neighborhood meetings on April twenty-first and August thirteenth, and you have those neighborhood meeting reports in your packet. The rezoning is consistent with the two thousand and forty-five land use map, which designates the parcels as regional mixed use. The Veridia, the Sustainable Development Zoning District allows for properties to be added to an SD zoning district as long as it's within two thousand feet of the zoning and to increase the development percentages on a pro-rata basis. This is the same way we've done the past two Veridia expansions. If approved, the Veridia SD Plan, Environmental Enhancement Plan, and Pattern Book will be applicable to these two properties. The applicant has indicated that no increase in the number of residential units is desired, so that will not increase, while the retail and office industrial square footages will increase by point one five percent. This rezoning was exempt from meeting with the Apex Environmental Advisory Board as it is less than ten acres. Planning staff is recommending approval of this rezoning with the conditions as offered by the applicant. The rezoning is consistent with the two thousand and forty-five land use map, and the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it will encourage more efficient and compatible development of the properties, provide for the same development standards as applicable to the undeveloped adjacent properties, and allow for uses that will generate jobs and increase the tax base. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Amanda. Any questions for Amanda while she's here?
I mean, I have one question. Was there any follow-up from the email that we received about a person claiming ownership of this property?
I have received no follow-up from that person when I replied back, clarifying that information.
Okay, would the applicant like to speak?
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, members of the board. Letitia Shapiro, Morningstar Law Group, here on behalf of the applicant, RXR Realty. Here with me today is William Noyes from RXR and Sarah Van Everie from McAdams, here to answer any questions you may have. And again, as Amanda explained, these two properties are part of a plan for RXR to just bring in additional properties from US one and fifty-five, in between US one and fifty-five, just north of five forty, into the Veridia SD Plan. And as Amanda mentioned, that if approved, the two parcels will be subject to the Veridia SD Plan, the Environmental Enhancement Plan, and the Pattern Book. So with that, thank you for your time and appreciate your recommendation of approval, and we're here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Letitia. I'm assuming this is maybe just a property that was held out until a better agreement was made for the property owner, and then at this point it's just being kind of absorbed into a larger project? Is that essentially what's going on? Okay. Okay. Any others for this rezoning case? Like to speak? Nope. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing section for this rezoning case. Bring it back to the board. Is there any questions we have left? No?
No questions.
Okay, y'all are quiet today.
It's pretty straightforward. I mean, this is pretty cut and dried. There's property that was held out at one point in time, but it's going to be the best use for it is going to be folding into Veridia rather than some third party coming in later on that may do something different that would not be as attractive as a product that we're seeing with Veridia.
I agree. Sounds like a motion from Jeff?
I'll make a motion to approve. Jeff?
Yeah, we have a motion from Jeff?
Dan second.
Dan second.
We got Daniel for second. Okay, all those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Okay, passes. Okay, with the item number two, we also have Alyssa out, so we're not going to bring Alyssa back in till the very end of the meeting. Okay, so item number two, we have Joshua up here with the public hearing, a possible motion to rezon case CZ, twenty-five CZ zero nine, the Jesse Drive Industrial. The, Mr. Gray here with Agent Walker Graham, Beacon Development, seek to rezone fifty-one point eight-two acres from residential agriculture to light industrial. Thank you, Joshua.
All right. So as I stated, presenting rezoning case twenty-five CZ zero nine, Jesse Drive Industrial. Just to orient you all to where this is at, this is in the southeast quadrant of the town's jurisdiction. The property is just under fifty-two acres and sits west, to the west and north of the Horton Park pud, as you can see here. The site has a lot of trees and has a couple of streams on the parcel. There is a town of Apex water line. You can see that alignment here where the trees have been removed in this straight line. And there are also sewer utilities on this parcel already, so that's going to be indicated with this cleared area here. And the main stream that we're going to discuss during this rezoning case kind of traverses in this area. So that's kind of the boundary of where the two districts will be here. And the only street stub existing to this parcel is the western terminus of Jesse Drive on the northern end. The current zoning of the property is residential agricultural. The land to the north and west are light industrial with the small section of land to the west zone, planning unit development conditional zoning down here. To the south, you have rural residential and planning and development conditional zoning. Both of these areas to the south are controlled by the Horton Park Development. And then coming up to the east, you have a continuation of the planning unit development conditional zoning of Horton Park and a sliver of residential agricultural right here, which will soon be absorbed as right-of-way for Horton Park Drive. And to the north, you have light industrial conditional zoning and regular light industrial. The proposed rezoning is contemplating both light industrial conditional zoning and medium-density conditional zoning with the primary intent of industrial development on the parcel. The applicant held their neighborhood meetings on June seventeenth and August eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Those reports can be found in your staff report. The rezoning case did meet with the Environmental Advisory Board, and the list of recommended conditions are in the staff report along with the applicant's response. There is one non-conditioned recommendation from the EAB that contemplates how the development of the greenway will occur. The environmental conditions that were proposed by the applicant are very similar to what you've seen previously in the Apex Gateway rezonings, including tree replacement for trees greater than twenty-four inches that are known on the site and preserving twenty-five percent of the existing tree canopy on-site. Regarding the medium-density conditional zoning area, Wake County Public Schools letter of impact was not requested for this rezoning as there are no proposed residential uses for that area, and the Apex Housing Staff did not make a recommendation for affordable units as there are no residential uses in that area. The two thousand and forty-five land use map identifies the parcel as both industrial employment, office employment, and medium-density residential. The proposed zoning districts are both consistent with the land use classification shown on the map. This slide here illustrates some of the zoning conditions that have been offered by the applicant and the position of the creek. So the creek is basically this border between the medium-density and the light industrial area. As you can see with environmental condition number sixteen, the medium-density conditional zoning area is being reserved for resource conservation area and only the uses greenway and utility miner to accommodate both the sewer and the future greenway in that area. There are, as you can see, there are prohibited uses here which are heavier uses. Then the contemplation behind this is that, you can see this little property boundary here. This is the general boundary of where residential is contemplated in Horton Park to the south and then Tech Flex to the north. So have this three hundred-foot separation for some of those heavier industrial uses here from the residential, and then a few uses are also restricted here, three hundred feet, just to kind of give some separation between those uses. Also, this is kind of showing you where the future alignment of Jesse Drive is contemplated from the current terminus through the property. There's also a zoning condition being offered by the applicant to extend the greenway and construct greenway from Jesse Drive South along this greenway alignment to within one hundred and fifty linear feet of the medium-density conditional zoning district. So generally staying outside of, of the known stream buffers in that area, but making it easier for the town or another developer maybe in the future to construct the greenway to connect to what is existing within the Horton Park development there. Planning staff does recommend approval of rezoning case twenty-five CZ zero nine with the conditions as offered by the applicant. The proposed rezoning is reasonable in the public interest as it will allow development of the property in a manner consistent with development to the north and allow for uses that will generate jobs and increase the tax base. This rezoning will also limit development within environmentally sensitive areas while providing areas closest to existing and anticipated residential areas as resource conservation areas. Are there any questions at this time?
So the only access will be in and out of Jesse Drive, which goes out onto Center or ten-ten?
Correct. That's the current, the current only.
And there's a light there?
I don't believe there's a light at ten-ten yet. I believe, I know there's one at Smith.
Oh, there's one at Smith.
But there's not one at ten-ten, I don't believe.
Will there be one?
There will be one in the future.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Joshua?
Is the, is the section of Jesse Drive and going through there is, is that going to be a four-lane section or just like a two? Do you remember?
Yes, that'll be a four-lane section with side path, I believe, on both sides in that area, as was shown on the current transportation plan here.
Joshua, is there any connection between the light industrial and the medium-density? Will there be a connection through that section?
There's not an anticipated connection because the developer does not wish to do anything to that medium-density area. The greenway would be the connection basically through for pedestrians to connect to Horton Park though, in the future.
So if I'm correct, the medium-density is going to be for resource conservation area and the greenway?
And greenway.
And greenway.
And then there's already that, so you can see this small area. There's sewer force main is this gray line here, and then there's also the regular sanitary sewer for service in this area. So there's already sewer utilities there, so they added the utility miner just to cover the bases in case anything needs to occur there.
Joshua, question. Do we know the completion date of the Horton's Creek area?
Of?
That section?
Which section?
Where it's very close to?
This yellow area here?
Yes.
We do not have a current completion date for that area. I'm not sure if they've had completed construction plans for that area either. I know that a lot of this area is starting to be developed down here, and, but I don't believe there's been anything proposed here yet.
Yeah, that is an interesting question because it's like, as far as like neighborhood outreach, within the limits of that property, like was enough engagement actually done? Because I mean, I drove through there like over the weekend, and like there's like no homes, like on that southern boundary really. So it's like, I mean, there's no one that lives there now, and they kind of will know what they're buying into when they go there. I'm just kind of wondering about like the rest of Horton.
I was more curious about the roads, you know, for that development? If there was going to be any connectivity of the streets into the light industrial? You know, how that's going to work out?
Yeah.
I believe that may have, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, was the intention of the three hundred-foot buffer was to, for the separation between the two? Is that correct?
Yes, the separation between the industrial uses and the proposed residential within Horton Park. And then I'll go back to this one. This bubble here, it shows the stream buffer that will remain undisturbed regardless of the use conditions. So that's also a limitation of development on this property. So then the applicant is offering another three hundred feet from the property line for these uses and then finishing out the three hundred feet of separation from this side being RCA for the medium-density, this being stream buffer in this area, and then the rest of the three hundred feet being another restriction. They still have to get past that before they can develop these uses in this second list.
So there's a hundred-foot stream buffer and then the added three hundred-foot for the separation? And if I, is what, the normal buffer would be fifty? Is that correct?
Normal buffer would probably be fifty or likely even less, especially in this northern area where Tech Flex would be considered. So if there's a If there's a use that's a higher um a higher land use class in that Tech Tech Flex development. And there was a lower use class in the light industrial area, that buffer could even be smaller, so. Um then providing this this separations, just kind of try trying to guarantee that there's. At least a little bit of breathing room between the heavy uses and where folks might be um a little bit more active and participating in retail.
I think I got my answer.
I think I do too.
Okay, any other questions for Joshua while I see here? Okay, well the app, thank you Joshua, uh would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening and thank y'all for your time. I'm Gray Harold with Beacon Partners. I'm a proj- project manager in Raleigh. And I'll keep this brief cuz I think Joshua pretty much covered everything I was gonna hit, but. Uh y'all are probably familiar with us. We came through twice with Apex Gateway, I'm at it sixty four and seven fifty one over the last two to. Three years, but we own and operate about seventy and a half million square feet across the Carolinas. Uh we have our offices in Raleigh and since we grew up here, um we've had great traction out at Apex Gateway. We've delivered the first six buildings, um you know, one of which is over here on the left-hand side, Coca-Cola's C-suite. They consolidated their distribution efforts across the triangle. Um our latest tenants, Life Science Logistics, uh they moved in back in July, um so they're operating out of about three hundred thousand square feet of space. Um doing gene therapy, distribution. And over here on the right side, uh Knightdale Gateway, we recently fully leased out that space um over the summer. And we're excited that uh Knightdale, the town of Knightdale awarded us the Community Appearance Award for an industrial project, which was. We were very, very honored and excited uh for that award, um but as Joshua highlighted. Here, um our site, um it's to the south of a heavy industrial district. Uh we actually delivered the Empire Distributions. Uh projects about four years ago, um which is north of the Apex Commerce Site, um we're to the south of the Wal Recycling and the Sewer Treatment Plant. And as as our staff highlighted, we uh worked with them to do a bifurcated rezoning. We struck the rezoning boundary on the center line of the stream, so we are conforming to the twenty forty five land use map. With the light industrial to the north and the medium density to the south. And we worked um extensively with staff, they were a great resource, but we wanted to kind of highlight the environmental conditions that we put forth at Apex Gateway. Uh we committed to a twenty five percent RCA um in heavily restricted development in the medium density uh to the south to provide a. A bigger buffer than would typically be in place for the Horton Park PUD. Um and in that, as as he highlighted, we just committed to the greenway and the minor utility uses in that um in that medium density area. Uh this is the slidey add up on screen. We we did work with staff to restrict those uses and prohibit uses on the left side with the Horton Park PUD. And then you can kind of see with the stream buffer and then our commitments with the medium density uh development, uh we feel there's a. Substantially large buffer between any potential um development in that Horton Park PUD. And just, I know uh Mister Daniel mentioned the outreach, uh when we were going through this rezoning, the actual um. I guess the criteria increased to like five hundred um feet from the par- par- uh project. So we did have um some participation from the townhomes that are out there as well as uh people that were pretty far away from the site. So we did have good participation in the neighborhood meetings. Um this is just kind of highlighting the uh infrastructure. We are extending Jesse Drive across the project frontage. That's that four lane divided section. Uh this is kind of a crude alignment with the uh greenway that conforms with Apex's uh future alignment. Um we did commit to increase stormwater detention to the twenty five year, um you know, fifteen years over the U D U D O minimum. As well as some green stormwater in- initiatives which we introduced at Apex Gateway, including the buyer retention, permeable pavers and the rainwater harvesting. Um but again, I'm Gray Harold with Beacon. If there's any questions, I'm happy to to field them, um and thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Gray. Any questions for Gray? I did see one, um just going through the um. See, it was a neighborhood meeting, August fourteenth, and there was a applicant response. I guess one of the questions about the uses. And uh it says here that we have restricted such uses such as the breweries and distilleries, for example, but then. I see them actually listed several times as being parts. I just didn't know kind of where that stood.
Uh yes, sir. So um when we worked with staff, we actually went in with um I guess a more ambitious uh industrial classification. And we we restricted, I don't know, about s- maybe a dozen to fifteen uses when we were working through s- staff like um laboratory. Industrial research, vehicle inspection, vehicle sales, towing, um and and we were just highlighting that the brewery restriction. Is prohibited within that three hundred feet um like here on neighboring the Horton Park PUD. That was at a recommendation of staff, so we we did uh I guess listen to staff and add that as a as a restriction. As well as those other half a dozen to dozen uses listed on the screen.
So that restriction is just with the three hundred feet?
Yes, sir, that's correct, yep.
Not in total?
Correct, correct.
And we don't have any infectious disease labs or anything?
No, sir, no, sir.
Just making sure.
We do not, we do not.
Okay, any other questions for Gray?
Thank y'all.
Okay, thank you, Gray. All right, anybody else in the public uh public comment? Nope, all right, so I'll go ahead and close the public comment, bring him back to the board. Board have any comments, concerns, questions?
No concerns for me, uh seems like to me the applicant and staff have worked together very well on this and um. And I think with the with the added buffers that uh. I think this one's just like the last one, very cut and dry, at least in my opinion, unless someone else has an objection, but um. I think with with the not doing anything with the R C ex- added extra RCA instead of the medium density residential, three hundred foot buffer. Seems very reasonable. And that would. So I'll be making a motion to approve twenty five Z Z zero nine Z Jesse Drive Industrial.
Okay, so we have a motion by Heath Keith, sorry. All right, anybody have a second? Any other comments?
Well, second, Jeff.
Okay, we have Jeff with a second. Okay, we have. Have a second, anybody like to uh add any other comments before? Nope, all those who are in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Okay, unanimously. Okay, thank you. Okay, so that will conclude our uh consent public hearing items. And we'll move on to new business. So we have Katie. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Alyssa, would you like to come back to the meeting?
I'd love to come back.
Okay, could we get, could we get a motion to bring Alyssa back in?
I would love to motion to bring Alyssa back into the meeting.
Okay, we have a second?
Aye, Sarah, can second?
Okay, so we have Mary and Sarah.
Welcome back.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, welcome back. Okay, now we're on to Katie, the senior long-range planner. She's gonna talk to us about a po- possible recommendation for the acceptance of the Apex Transit Prioritization Study and Associated Appendices.
Yes, yeah, good afternoon or evening, Mister Chair and members of the planning board. I'm Katie Schwing. I'm the transit planner in the planning department. Um and I'm here to present uh the Apex Transit Prioritization Study. Uh just a quick overview of what the study is. It's a project to develop priorities for improvements and expansion to local public transit in town. Over an approximately five-year timeframe. So the primary outcome of this study is actually to develop a prioritized list of recommendations. Um that we hope to be accepted by town council. Um and so that's why we're here tonight to ask your recommendation as well as to um bring it forward to public. To town council um at the end of the month. Um and a secondary outcome of the study is to actually make an implementation plan to help direct staff. Um to do this work over the next approximately five years. So this was a an internal staff-led study. There were four main tasks that we worked through. Um really over last year and this year as we kind of moved through the project. So we reviewed existing transit-related plans and and documents, not only locally, but for the region as a whole. To get an understanding of our transit planning context. We gathered a lot of public feedback. Most of that was on the front end in twenty twenty four. Um and then this year, we focused more towards analyzing possible different options and developing the recommendations that you'll see tonight. I did also want to point out that the full study document is available at the project webpage, which is. Public input dot com slash transit study. Um I think you all have this in your packet as well. I apologize for the length of the documents, but um it does include quite a bit of information in the appendices. Um that really uh provides a good synopsis of the first three tasks that were completed as a part of this study. So the existing conditions, the the um public input and the the analysis are really all detailed in the appendices. So I'm not planning to go over those in detail. We would probably be here for a long time if I did, so. Um the most of the presentation will focus on the actual final recommendations. There are a few things, though, I did want to highlight, um just so we're all on the same page, so. We do have an existing transit plan map for the town as a part of our existing advanced Apex. Uh comprehensive transportation plan. Um and if this study is accepted by town council, it won't automatically replace that transit plan map. So um what the idea would be is is that if the study is accepted. We would then use those recommendations to bring forward possible transit plan map amendments. To all into town council and that that would include a a public hearing as a part of that. So these are recommendations and and direction to staff at this point. That's kind of the outcome of the study. And just to highlight a few things about the public feedback we gathered, again, I'm not gonna go through all the results. Um but I just wanted to make sure you all knew what we did, so in twenty twenty four, we had two separate public surveys that um we conducted. The first was an online survey open to anyone in the community um that focused more on what, asking what folks preferences were. Regarding future public transit services. You might have seen that survey um when it went out last year. Um and we also conducted an onboard survey to customers on Go Apex Route One. Um and that that had a different set of questions. It asked more about demographics, about their current riding experience. And customer satisfaction and and the things that they most wanted to see improved about the service. Um and then this year, we also had a public comment period this summer. We had put out the draft recommendations in June. And then gathered public input and then finalized them based on that public input, so now we're to the final recommendations. Um and then a few more things, so I I did also want you to know that we have been coordinating with the Apex. Uh Transit Advisory Committee throughout this process. And that group is now being rolled into the Multimodal Transportation Advisory Board. Um we have our first official meeting on Wednesday um for the new group. Um but they really provided a lot of great feedback along the way. You know, we we took a lot of draft things to them before it was finalized, so what questions should we ask on the survey? What route concepts should we look at, that sort of thing, and they provided a lot of input along the way. So again, more analysis is available in the report and appendices, but I did want to highlight two of the main things we were looking at during the analysis portion. And this focused more on identifying possible fixed routing options for the town. So we looked a lot at what are the priority areas to serve and then what is a logical routing to connect those places. So we gathered public input about where people wanted transit access, what destinations they wanted to go to. We looked not only at census level population and job data, but we worked um. You know, to project that forward a few years using the approved developments that you all have probably reviewed over the past few years. Um and then, you know, looked at our long-range plan, where our transit-oriented development context areas and things like that. And then as far as logical routing goes, we decided to use a simple and straightforward routing as as we could. To make it more useful for customers, so we decided to go to half-hour or hourly runtimes and schedules. So that people wouldn't have to rely on, you know, exact times in in a detailed timetable. Um we wanted to make sure there was the ability for people to transfer between routes, not only local routes, but regional routes. Um and avoid like long, complicated, one-way loops and and things like that to make it as easy as possible to use the service. So with that being said, I'll, I'm just gonna move into what the final recommendations are. Um as we went through this whole process, we realized we were actually gonna have two sets of recommendations. One set is actually fixed route service recommendations for the future, um and we have four items in that set. And then we developed another set was, which was kind of everything else that we needed to do to help support public transit. Into the future and provide um options. So this map is kind of showing you the difference between what is sort of our baseline programmed transit service. Um out to about F Y twenty seven compared to a new map, which is showing the existing plus the recommended. Fixed route service changes. So the littler map is kind of what's gonna be happening anyway, if we don't do anything. And then the map on the right is um that plus our recommendations, and I'll go through those individually. So recommendation one, um it's actually to implement um recommendations. That have already received funding approval but haven't actually been implemented yet for uh Apex, Go Apex Route One. So staff have been working since the launch of the service to identify kind of small incremental improvements. Um based on public feedback and based on the feedback we received last year in the study. Um and that is kind of three bullet points there. One, increasing frequency on the service. Um Monday through Saturday, currently the route only operates hourly, and so we've received funding approval to start operating every half hour. Monday through Saturday, um except for late nights, um and then add Sunday service, so we only operate Monday through Saturday now, so it would be to add Sunday service. And that would be hourly, as well as continue more bus stop improvements, and that includes things like adding more shelters, benches. Um trushkins, bike racks, stuff like that. Um and we are, I've already started working towards implementing these things and and I have kind of. A guide at at the bottom about, you know, what the proposed implementation implementation schedule would be. And we think we can do these items fairly soon, within the next year or so. Okay, fixed route recommendation number two would actually be to make tweaks to the routing of Go Apex Route One. And this is, a lot of this is based on providing better access to um areas people have requested access to or areas we know. There are gonna be more people, so the first is to actually tweak the downtown routing. So right now, Go Apex really only serves downtown once per hour. It's just the way the route loops. Um and this would change it to serve it in both directions, so it would be. A lot faster for people to access downtown, so you'd never be more than like fifteen minutes from downtown wherever you boarded the bus. Um and this was the number one destination people reported wanting to get to uh in our public surveys. The second bullet point is to actually make a small loop down Chapel Ridge Road to better serve the apartments and townhomes. That are all under construction right now out there. There's gonna be a significant number of them, as well as some affordable units with the um apartments. Um and the third bullet is to investigate options to better serve the area around Broadstone Way, which is where Walmart is. People have also asked for better a- access to the Walmart, um and there's, you know, affordable housing down there as as well. We have some ideas about how to better serve the area. Um that one might take a little more work, but the the first two items, we um could potentially start service in fiscal year twenty eight. Okay, recommendation number three is actually to develop a another fixed route for the town. We're calling it the Pine Plaza Pleasant Park Concept, a lot of Ps. Um but it would be a route that would be similar to Go Apex Route One. Um and and operate under the same kind of service standards, but would serve new areas. Um so it would go all the way from downtown up to Pine Plaza Drive, near the Costco and apartments that are up there. Serve Eva Perry Library, come back down through downtown, all the way through um. South Salem Street down to Pleasant Park and then back to downtown, and there's a lot of development happening along that part of South Salem Street, I'm sure you're aware. And there's a lot of development happening along that part of South Salem Street, I'm sure you're aware, as well. And then this one, when you're developing a new route from scratch, it's really a three-year process to get it going. So the proposed implementation schedule would see us applying for funding and kind of finalizing the routing and the stop locations this year and into next year. Then it's about a year-long process to actually install the bus stops. And then, once that was completed, we'd be able to start the service. So we're anticipating that around fiscal year '29. And then the fourth recommendation is to look into starting another fixed route, which we're calling the Veridia East Village Route Concept, which would be a thirty-minute route, so it would be a shorter route in total. And it would serve Veridia East Village, including the new proposed Wake Tech Campus. It's going in down there, as well as mixed-use development. And that would basically be a year behind the Pine Plaza Pleasant Park Route Concept. Oh, and one thing I did want to also point out is this, this gray bubble that's around these routes is our GoApex Door-to-Door Service Area. So we also offer a secondary service called GoApex Door-to-Door, which is the ADA paratransit service for folks with disabilities. And there's a required service area around all your fixed routes. So as, as our fixed route area network would grow, so would the door-to-door service area. Okay, so that was all the fixed route service recommendations that we're putting forward. The next set is kind of all the other projects. Recommendation number one is to support Phase One of the Proposed Downtown Mobility Hub, which is planned for near downtown. Sorry. And I think you all saw the study that came forward this spring, identifying a potential location near Salem and Moore Streets. And we're proposing to support Phase One, which is, is not a passenger rail station. It's, it's more of a transit, transfer area. And this would be a way to facilitate transfers, not only between local services, but regional services as well, which will have several in the next few years. And of course, the timeline is a just proposed schedule based on the information we have right now, which could change, but we'd like to, you know, work to hopefully begin construction by the end of this, you know, five-year timeframe. Set recommendation number two in the other set is to work as a part of the Comprehensive Plan Update for Peak Plan 2055, which just kicked off, to identify possible coordination with better transit and land use, transit, transit supportive development. So we just kicked off this summer, and the, the Peak Plan Update is expected to take about eighteen months. So we just recommend to work to hopefully better identify ways to facilitate transit supportive development where transit is actually planned to go. Recommendation, recommendation number three is to explore options to serve seniors and those with disabilities who are outside the federally required GoApex Door-to-Door Service Area. As I mentioned, we have that federal bubble requirement for our door-to-door service area, but that doesn't cover all of Apex. There's, we know there's folks with mobility needs outside that service area bubble. And there's a lot of potential options we could do to provide more mobility options to them. So we propose studying that further. We didn't really have scope within this study timeline to, to come up with a whole set of recommendations for all these other types of services. So we'd recommend, you know, studying it and then implementing it towards the end of the study time period. Recommendation number four is to continue to support improved pedestrian and bicycle connections to transit. We heard this loud and clear in the survey responses we received. It was a really important factor for a lot of people, that they have good pedestrian, bicycle access to bus stops. And not only to bus stops, but just in general in town. That was a, just a lot of feedback we received about better bike-ped connections. So we've been working to ensure better pedestrian and bicycle access to transit since GoApex launched. And so this is more of an ongoing task that, that we'll have to continue working, not only on transit projects, but as we, we conduct more bike-ped projects and other just general transportation projects, we'll have to ensure that we're providing good access to those transit stops. Okay, recommendation number five is to investigate transit signal prioritization in town, which would allow buses to travel more efficiently. So transit signal prioritization is, sorry, these are on an automatic timer. Basically, a software system where transit vehicles can communicate to traffic signals to really follow any logic you decide you want to do. So if a transit vehicle is approaching a green light, it can actually program the light to stay green longer to allow the transit vehicle to keep going and not have to stop as often. There are similar programs out there for emergency services. This would be kind of a similar technology, but not necessarily the same level of priority that like an ambulance would have. But it really would help with reliability and kind of even the playing field for transit vehicles. Because as you're probably aware, transit vehicles just tend to travel a little more slowly and carefully through the network, and they tend to hit more of those red lights, so this would help speed that up. And so we would propose to conduct a study and work towards implementing this where warranted. And then the last recommendation, recommendation six, is to explore options to serve others. And I mean others in addition to those with disabilities or seniors who are outside the general fixed route service area. And that, we know that there might be others who have mobility needs that aren't being met and really can't be met by fixed route service all over town. But there might be things that we can do to help improve mobility. So we proposed to conduct a study about this and really try to tie it in with the same investigation for seniors and those with disabilities, to see if we can find some efficiencies or synergies to open it up to more folks perhaps. And I don't know what this looks like yet. That's part of the, the investigation is, you know, I've got pictures of like micro-transit services or more demand-response transportation, or is that a program to help subsidize Uber or Lyft rides for people under certain circumstances, or things like that, that other localities have, have done. So that would be to investigate that further. Okay, so that's all the recommendations that we have for the study. We do have a request for a possible motion from you all to recommend Town Council accept the Transit Prioritization Study. And I'm happy to answer any questions or hear any comments.
Thank you, Katie. We appreciate it. Any questions for Katie?
Katie, were you able to gauge, were the people who were responding to the surveys the same people who are actually using it? Or are the people who are idealizing what they want transportation to look like, but not the actual ones who will be using GoTrans on a regular basis? Were you able to, was that the same, you know?
Yeah.
The people we want to answer the questions, the ones who are actually doing it? Were we getting the feedback that we wanted from that, that population?
So we did ask that as a question on the online survey. So as, as you recall, we had kind of two separate surveys. We definitely wanted to capture the current riders, so we had that onboard survey to make sure we captured as many of those as we could within the constraints of the survey time period. And then we asked on the online survey, how many were current riders? And it was pretty low. We have a pretty, I would say, small, dedicated ridership right now for GoApex.
Next question, who, who are the, is, where are we at in terms of ridership? It's relatively low?
So I would say, so last year, our full, last full fiscal year, oh gosh, I can't remember the numbers, but we had about sixteen hundred. And then it's been actually probably sixteen thousand, sorry. And then it tracked a little lower this past year. We did have some mechanical issues on the bus this summer. We're getting a new bus any week now. That kind of threw off some of our trips, and understandably, ridership dipped because of that. We're hoping it goes back up with our new vehicle. But yeah, it's, I'd say been tracking about a thousand to twelve hundred riders a month, which translates to about fifty or so riders a day. Which, and most of the people who responded to the onboard survey said they were regular riders who are riding it to access work as the most common destination. But we also did hear, we have a lot of young people who ride, a lot of older people who ride occasionally as well. I mean, I could keep going, but yeah, yeah.
Okay, I, actually, can I segue off and do another question? Just, it really is out of interest to me, but, so the people who are riding, if something happens such as the mechanical failures, how are you getting in touch with the people who ride it regularly, if they're dependent on that, to get to work somewhere in Apex? If there's maybe a bit of a digital divide and they don't necessarily have access? What are we doing to make sure that they know that their ride that they've become dependent on from the town is no longer available?
Yeah, so we've been working as closely as we can with GoCarry, who's actually the service provider for the service. The, the fastest and most efficient way is to push updates through the GoCarry app, which we've recommended everyone who rides download, because they can send real-time updates like, hey, there's a detour, or the bus is running behind schedule, or, or something like that. We did find in our onboard survey that the vast majority of people did have access to a smartphone, which in recent years, I think, it didn't always used to be that way, but honestly, in recent years, it's almost everyone has access to one. So that has helped. We do have a Transit News and Updates page, which I update as much as I can with those sorts of updates. But yeah, that's not as quick as the app.
That's great. Thank you.
I have a question. So as part of, like, going through the process to do this report, which is a fabulous report, by the way, and we partner with GoCarry for like transit, have we looked at what it might look like in the future of internalizing that to the town? Like having like our own maintenance, our own bus service, all that stuff as part of this process?
Yeah, great question. So the, the short answer is not in detail. When, when the town first began preparation to launch GoApexRoute1, I think it was looked at briefly, but there's a lot of kind of upfront stuff you have to do when you take transit internal, because there's a lot of requirements that are involved when you accept grant funding, especially federal grant funding for transit, which we are hoping to do. That requires a lot of reporting, a lot of following guidance for state of good repair and maintenance and things like that. And it doesn't scale down that well. So if you're only operating like one vehicle, it's often not worth it to, to do it internally on your own. That being said, as we grow, it might make more sense, and, and we can definitely look into it and are, and are happy to look into it more over time. I don't think we're at that spot like today, but into the future, it might make more sense for us to do that.
I have a couple of questions. So this study is, is, is it sort of fluid? The results, meaning that Eva Perry got a high request for ridership. Now with the announcement of the library going down South Salem Street at Hume Olive, would it be, part of what y'all do is look at when that library comes onboard, taking that existing line that's, that potentially will go to Pleasant Park and running it to the library? And just extending that loop and sort of the same thing for when the children's hospital comes online? Is that, is that the way y'all do stuff? Is when those things start to come online, you, you look at whether, whether it validates a new bus line or just a simple extension of the one that you have?
Yeah, that's, that's a great example too, with the new potential library down in Friendship. We, so unfortunately, the, the timeline of getting the work done was a little bit expanded. And so by the time we heard about like the location of that library and things like that, it was kind of past our analysis window. But this is fluid enough that over time, if, if we find that we can feasibly serve a, a destination like that that we know is going to be a priority for the community, we can come back and, and request more changes to the Transit Plan Map and, and further investigate project ideas to make that happen. Right now, I will say, the Pleasant, the Pine Plaza Pleasant Park Route is kind of maxed out in terms of an hourly runtime for the route. But once, maybe as we get closer to implementation, we'll find we have a few more minutes, or, you know, we can play around with it a little more to find out if, how we could serve that future destination.
Good. Thank you.
You mentioned like ADA, the buses that we have now, the routes that we have, are they ADA compliant?
Yes, so we, we technically, the buses are not ours, but they're GoCarries, but they all come equipped with a, a lift ramp, basically, so you can roll on and off the vehicle. And to, almost all of our bus stops are completely ADA compliant, as is. And we've got a few legacy ones we inherited that we're working to get those fully concreted out, basically. But yeah, so the, the buses, the, the fixed route buses are all ADA compliant. And that includes other things like announcements, like we have LED displays and, and audio announcements. So folks who might have a visual or, or hearing disability still would be able to understand where they are along the route. And operators are trained to announce if those aren't working and, and things like that. So those are ADA compliant. And then we also offer the door-to-door service, which is like wheelchair-accessible vans mostly, that will pick up folks from an origin address and drop them off at a destination address, so they don't have to go to a bus stop if they can't access one.
Another kind of piggytail off of what Jeff had mentioned too, like changing of different routes. I'm assuming that, you know, when you're looking at building structures at certain areas, that's not going to, that's hopefully going to be, you know, more major highway, those types of areas that we know are all, we're always going to service, or areas that are already built out. So something like a library, we're not going to go build a structure, the next thing you know, the library moves. You know, kind of a sunk cost now to the town. Sure the town is going to fund that, right? So is there, I'm sure you have some sort of way of saying, okay, here's the major ones that we're going to have, but we're not just going to put them any and every stop, because it might not be, one, feasible, and, and two, the route may change.
Yeah, that's a great point. And, and I will say, like, bus stops are more expensive than you think they are when you actually go and start pouring concrete and things like that. So we do have a bus stop improvement policy that kind of outlines what we would consider a standard or basic bus stop versus what we're, we would call an enhanced bus stop. And those would include like a shelter and bike racks and trashcan and, and things like that. And a basic bus stop would just be the ADA compliant landing pad and a bench. And yeah, we would have to kind of finalize where the best locations for the actual stops would be for these new concepts. Fortunately, as we've been going along this process, there's been a lot of development happening. And to the extent that we can, we've actually been conditioning the developers to build out the concrete for the bus stops. So like for the proposed Veridia East Village Stop, the, the developer of Veridia has already agreed to put in about sixteen bus stops in that East Village area for us to be able to serve more easily when, and, you know, we can provide service to that area. So that has saved us some, you know, honestly, project time. You know, in some of those new growing areas, we have one, two, that are conditioned for the Depot 499 development and things like that. So that makes it a little bit easier, but there's still more work to fill it out.
Very good. Okay, any other questions for Katie?
Back to the ADA, is there a maximum? I know it's not a full bus, so say people with wheelchairs, you happen to have three at a stop. What happens?
Yeah, so the, on the fixed route bus, there's, so there's seats on the bus that can actually fold up to provide more space. And then the wheelchair or can actually be kind of secured to the side of the bus to avoid. The wheelchair or um, can actually be kind of secured to the side of the bus to avoid rolling. Um, usually they keep one seat up. For so anyone can just roll on, but there is expanded capacity. Um, I don't think we've run into the problem. Where there's not been capacity for folks who needed it. Um, at that point. That would be kind of an operational procedure that would need to happen with Go Carries to, to call for backup. Yeah.
I was just anticipating for when it gets really popular.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the transit study.
Jim, you got a motion?
It's Jeff, sorry.
Do we have a second?
Mary, I'll second.
Let me have Mary. All right, we have a second. Mary, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have one more motion. That is for the adjournment unless there's anything else to discuss.
Motion to adjourn from Alyssa.
Thank you, Alyssa. Do we have a second?
Keith's second.
Keith's second, okay. Motion's second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.